Okay, good evening. This is the June ninth meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we're meeting remotely under the governor's uh uh state of emergency and order. And so as a result of that, um I have to read a little procedure of how these meetings are handled. So just bear with me. So um I'm Ode Apollo Chairman of the Board. Um I'd like to take a minute just to convert confirm that all the members and the people who are participating in the agenda are on the agenda. Our president can hear me. Excuse me. Um, so members, when I call your name, uh, please just respond yes or however, uh, Beth Cassavant.
Present.
John LeBeau.
I'm here.
Jim Kane.
Present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, and staff, um, for the same please, Kevin Mizikar.
Uh, present, uh, but I believe you missed Mr. Samia on this report.
Did I again?
Thanks, I'm getting, I'm getting the complex.
Sorry, John.
Present.
I checked you off. Um, um. Priya Rantham.
Yes.
Here goes now.
Here.
Valerie Clemmie.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, uh, this is an open meeting of the Board of Selectmen and it's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Breaker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a public publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting has no public hearing, so it will not have a public comment period. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is meeting by Google Hangout as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. It's also being broadcast on choose three media connection. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer unless asked by the chairperson or staff person because anything uh on the screen may broadcast uh be captured in the in the recording. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, I'll cover some rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has a lead role for this particular item or speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members inviting each by name to provide any comments or questions. So please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Again, remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. To mute and unmute your telephone, you can dial star six. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Uh, for staff that are expected to present, please hold until your name is called to present and follow the same guidance uh as the uh the board members were just giving uh given. After your presentation, members of the committee will be given the opportunity to ask questions or any response. Wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members during the meeting, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Okay, so we'll move on to the main agenda. Do they have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Giving none, uh, roll call vote. Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mrs. Apollo, aye. Thank you. You have a motion to approve the minutes of the May twelfth meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Giving none, uh, roll call vote again. Uh, Mrs. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mrs. Samia?
Aye.
Mrs. Apollo, aye. Um, next part of our meeting is uh reports and announcements. Does anybody have any announcements this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau?
Board members, um, as I imagine the rest of you have been doing since we issued our statement last Thursday regarding the homicide of George Floyd, I've been thinking about appropriate next steps. Uh, my impression, which I think you all share, is that the board's statement was intended as a beginning step and not as a final action. I've spent a lot of time thinking and though I realize I have many, many more questions than answers, I believe that the town of Shrewsbury needs to do much more, uh, excuse me, needs to do much more to consider the questions of diversity, discrimination, and racism. Um, I made Mr. Mizikar aware of my thinking on Friday, at which time he informed me uh that he had heard similarly from some residents uh that further action is necessary, and I believe that's what led to tonight's Correspondence Item twenty-nine in which we are requested to form an anti-racism committee. Board members, though I do agree with the sentiment expressed in the request, I do not think it is as bold and broad as it should be. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that you place on an upcoming agenda, preferably on our next regularly scheduled meeting, an agenda item to discuss any and all steps necessary to consider questions of diversity, discrimination, and racism in the town of Shrewsbury and how to best address them. As it's not on tonight's agenda, I don't think it's appropriate to discuss it too deeply, but I uh do plan to propose the formation of a much larger body than a standing committee. I'm thinking more of a task force uh that will meet very intensely and aggressively over a uh a limited period of time, uh perhaps ninety days to study the issues and then provide a series of recommendations to the board. Uh, the membership of such a task force would be composed of a mix of residents and government leaders, and it would reflect the makeup of the community. The task force would offer opportunities for public comments through written and if technologically feasible, oral comments. I certainly expect that among the recommendations from such a task force would be the formation of a smaller permanent public body as the writers of uh Correspondence Item twenty-nine request. My thinking is that the permanent committee's charge would be framed around the recommendations uh that came out of this larger task force. So I'd request that you uh uh consider placing that on a future agenda, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LeBeau. Um, I think, I think it's a good idea. Um, I look forward to uh having it on the agenda and having the discussion at at the next meeting. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments on this issue? Ms. Cassavant?
Um, I would just like to uh thank Selectmen LeBeau for bringing this concept forward um and the residents that voiced their concerns and their desire for real and concrete action to take place. Um, I look forward to seeing where this endeavor takes us, and I also um agree that we need to put this on a future agenda so that we can really talk about the right parameters for this type of a task force uh so that the objectives of addressing racism, diversity, and discrimination within our community um are done so appropriately and in a timely fashion, you know, that we have to take into consideration the limitations of COVID, but I think that we found creative ways to meet and and continue our business, and that I think that the task force um shouldn't be put off until um in-person meetings are possible. I think we need to get started on it right away. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else um like to make comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Kane?
Mr. Chairman, first, I'm I'm not one to repeat uh people's earlier comments, but I will stress again, uh, I'd like to thank my colleague, Mr. LeBeau, for raising it, and I certainly agree with my colleagues' uh comments from Ms. Cassavant. I'm equally interested in understanding more about what people think is or isn't going on. I must tell you, I think part of the goodness that will come out of this is formalizing many of the informal processes that this board in my short tenure has undertaken to ensure that we were sweeping as wide a net as we could when we sought additional participation for boards and commissions and as we set up various uh groups within our town under official business and sought to make sure new people were not only sought out and encouraged to put their resumes forward, but the extra efforts that each one of us took on perhaps an informal basis. I think one of the strengths that will come out of this is a much more formal process that will recognize the observations that John and Beth have offered. So thank you, uh, John, for raising it this evening in such a timely way and such a succinct way.
Thank you. Um, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Um, I go back, uh, in addition to echoing our colleague sentiments, and I thank Mr. LeBeau for bringing this forward um on such a timely basis. I go back to our release on the fourth, and it's important again that we move forward the words that we talked about in terms of fostering equality, opportunity, and fundamental fairness for all. Um, we need to do it and act impactfully and meaningfully and act quickly. I think that there are two other pieces of information that would be important to learn from now to our next regularly scheduled meeting and have that information in front of us. First, it'd be helpful and to know what we actively do today as a community, um, the various departments to see what we do in terms of policies and procedures. Uh, that'd be one thing that would be helpful as part of a an analysis, analysis to see where we are today. Also help us recognize any gaps that we have and how we can learn to do things better. I also would encourage anyone watching this and for all of us to reach out to the community from now until our next meeting to also ask for additional feedback as to what they would think um, the what this committee would look like, what the goals of this committee would be, and what members of Shrewsbury want their community to be. We've talked a lot about long-term planning. I think at the the most important thing is for everyone in our community to have an equal opportunity and equity to thrive. So I think this is absolutely important for us as a community going forward to undertake this work. It's extremely meaningful. It will make us a better community, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, going last, everything you say is gonna repeat what somebody else says, so um I'm gonna try not to do that, but I I think it it um, I agree with uh everything that everybody has said so far. Um, I I think it might be um helpful if one or two members of the board um and uh perhaps the manager um could reach out to the letter writers um uh who appear to be um at least in two letters, um kind of like the leaders of a group and sit down to try to start scoping out um what um exactly people are are gonna be looking for in this task force, so we have something to do. We have something to focus on before we put it together. Um, we may not um agree that all of the all of the items are um, uh, should be included in the in the study that the task force does, but I I think it's important to understand exactly what uh the people are talking about, um, and what they're looking for. Uh, because sometimes it's difficult for that to come out um in a shot letter or an email. Um, so I'd like, I'd like the board to think about that. Um, the other thing I would just like to comment, um, I'm gonna take a couple of items out of order um on the correspondence. Um, number twenty-five um is a is a an email dated June third from uh Chelsea Pager um eleven Westview, um, asking uh similar questions um that this task force um would be answering about um inclusion, having people feel safe, um, how they feel that they're they matter in the community. Um, item twenty-eight um is an email dated June eighth from Elizabeth Hilton, one twenty-three Bumblebee Circle in Philip Bloomberg, Fort Brook Street. Um, that is a a little more specific to uh Juneteenth regi- recognition. Um, and as you you probably all know by now, um, that um is a day that um, June nineteenth, actually. Um, it's based on uh when Texas um officially ended slavery, um, and it ended slavery in the U.S. Um, and and back in the seventies, um, uh, some formality of of recognizing that date had taken hold, and it spread throughout the country. Worcester actually does something, the state annually has a proclamation regarding it. In any event, um, I don't think we can act on this tonight. There were three requests um putting it on the town calendar, and I think Mr. Mizikar and I are not clear what that means. Um, requesting flying a flag and um requesting statements of significance on the town website. So um, because of COVID and the restaurants um now being able to open but need modifications with outside seating um and such, we scheduled a series of meetings over the next week and a half so that we can respond quickly um to the applications of the restaurants that they can open. So um, where if there was any action, this would be time sensitive, and I think it would be uh appropriate to put it on. Um, we can't put it on Thursday's meeting because it's too late to post, but um, I think to have a discussion of it, perhaps we could have it on. Um, I think the Monday, uh, the meeting is Monday, the fifteenth. Is that correct, Val, the next meeting?
Yes, we have one uh this Thursday and next Monday, Tuesday and Thursday.
Okay, but I think if we could put that on the agenda to discuss it and decide if we want to take any action, if it's appropriate or not, um, would would be the time to do it. And finally, um, as Mr. uh LeBeau mentioned, we had an email dated June eighth from Sonham Zare of A. Jamie Lane in Bridget Hilton of One Jacobson Drive um with this proposal for the anti-rac- uh anti-racism committee. Um, so I I think what Mr. LeBeau has brought forward encompasses all of these, so um, I wanted to bring them up at the same time. I I did just want to say, though, that um, I I do agree that this is a much bigger issue than um just a racism committee. I think the task force is a good idea. Um, but um, it might be a little Pollyannaish, but I really think that that the way um all these issues of racism at any level, um, whether they're violent, whether they're subtle, um overt, um, are really gonna stop and and things are gonna change when when everybody realizes um that everybody is the same, that we need to accept that um, there are differences in people, people have different opinions, but we all want the same thing. We all want to be safe. We want to feel included. Um, we want to live um without being in fear. Um, and we all want to have equal opportunities and just be treated fairly. So hopefully, as a result of all these discussions in the task force, um, we can start heading down that path. So um, I thank you very much, Mr. LeBeau, for bringing it up. Um, Mr. Mizikar, um, I should have asked you before I I got ready to close, but do you have anything you'd like to add to this discussion?
Uh, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, you know, I've been thinking about this just like the board has. It, you know, really took me back to about sixteen months ago when we began to gather as uh internal team, as department heads, to think about some long-term planning and um find inroads to begin deeper engagement with the community. And I was proud to be uh a a member of a group of uh town leaders, uh internal leaders of the town government. Um, and and they defined a per- purpose statement for the town of Shrewsbury uh such as the town of Shrewsbury is dedicated to fostering a vibrant and safe community for all to thrive. And from there, we began to build a vision for how and what that means to be a local government um with a purpose um to for everyone to thrive. And, you know, we've developed this statement internally um that that simply reads, "The town of Shrewsbury will be the best local government in the world." If we're able to to foster an environment for a safe community for all all to thrive, we have to be the best at our jobs. You know, in my opinion, local government was created for the benefit of and to serve its residents. Uh, and there's no government entity that is is to be closer or more responsive to its residents. Local government employees, whether by actual physical address or professional commitment, are members of this community. And we are here to serve, protect, foster, and enable, never to harm. I know the individual employees of this town, and I see their passion to protect, foster, and enable, and reject all things that may cause harm. And I see and hear the residents of this town and others asking for us to never cause harm, physical, psychological, intentional, or unintentional. I have compassion for the groups and individuals that local governments have harmed. I'm disgusted by and rejected reject any actions that would cause harm. I grieve for the family of George Floyd, and I embrace my role as the town manager to better connecting the employees of the town and its residents. In my opinion, we are not separate groups. We are Shrewsbury. And thank you for the opportunity to state that.
Thank you. Um, any other board members uh while we move on to the next item?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
I simply want to recognize Kevin's effort, particularly that statement and the fact, uh, as I earlier referenced, is a variety of efforts, perhaps informal, perhaps not public, perhaps not even written down. Um, the concern is there, the respect is there, and the concern is articulated by my colleague, Mr. LeBeau and Mr. Mizikar. I think it nail it quite well from the town perspective, and I want to again thank John and thank Kevin for his continued efforts and leadership.
Thank you. Okay, um, our next order of business is the Town Managers Report. Mr. Mizikar, do you have anything this evening?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of updates for the board. Um, just a reminder, everyone, uh, that the farmer's market starts on June seventeenth, which is a week from tomorrow. So um, that will be happening uh here at the town hall as it has in the past. Um, so June seventeenth, please mark your calendars and take that opportunity. Um, I wanted to provide some updates that have come in to me uh from the Department of Public Works regarding the summer construction schedule and what's been going on. Uh, within the Public Buildings Division, uh, they're working on a quiet room door project and sound improvement project to reduce noise within the library. Uh, within uh the Highway Division, uh, the Chapter Ninety funded roadway improvement projects have been bid. Uh, five bidders came in, um, and the low bidder is just over eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, which will provide our improvement program this year for Longfellow Road, Flanagan Road, Westport Circle, Brightside Place, Dolphin Road, Dana Road, Deergrass Road, Torrey Lane, and Torrey Drive. Um, also within the Highway Department, line plank, long line painting was completed in May, and roadside mowing is underway. Within the Water and Sewer Division, unidirectional flushing continues. The Main Street Water Main Service connections are being finalized. An underground storage tank is being removed from Harvey Place Sewer Pump Station, and the Route Twenty Sewer Main Project started on May eighteenth. We are holding up FY twenty-one projects, obviously, within the Water and Sewer Division, pending town meeting action and funding for those. Uh, but we have plenty of work to still undertake this summer that was previously funded. Uh, finally, within um Stormwater, uh Boyleston Circle, uh Phase Two improvements, um bids were received and funds are on hand, and a pre-construction meeting will be scheduled within the next few weeks. So I'd be happy to pause there for any questions related to that, and then I'd like to put up a PowerPoint presentation for the COVID nineteen special report.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kane?
Um, Kevin, perhaps it's in your next report, and if so, I will hold, but can you provide us with an update on the CARES funding and that uh application that you have been working on?
Yes, uh, yeah, we will do that uh as soon as we turn the page on the on the next report.
Very good. One final question, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, Kevin, have you heard anything from the rating agencies uh since all of the COVID nineteen uh issues have broken out?
Um, when we originally, uh, well, w- we do receive uh almost weekly updates from our uh financial advisor. Um, the rating agencies across the board have uh recognized the downward pressure on on local revenues. Um, and regardless of how dire the situation it is, they always frown upon the use of the rainy day funds, even when it's pouring outside like it is. So um, there's certainly downward pressure across the markets, Massachusetts, um, and it's local governments always fare better um during even wide-scale economic downturns because we rely upon the very stable property tax for the vast majority of our funding, so that puts us in a better position than most municipalities who uh their primary revenue source may be a sales tax or something that's more uh discretionary in the consumer environment. So I I wouldn't uh be shocked to see a significant number of downgrades for both state and local governments in the near future. Um, and I know this board's committed to do what we have to do to keep the operations moving and and being um continuing the appropriate use of any reserve funding in our operations, but as you know, we we must continue to do what we're legally required to do and and provide services to citizens.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Cassavant, did you have a question?
I did. It was actually just um going back to the the rental of the the mower, the roadside mower, and I was just curious as to what happens after June thirtieth if the roadside needs to be mowed again, because it says that we rented it from June first to June thirtieth. I know that I had seen some comments um on social media about grass being very high on the side of the road on Iraida Road, and the Highway Department had been contacted and said they were gonna get down there and and take care of it, but what happens after June thirtieth?
Um, if there are signif- if there are concerns that need to be addressed, they'd have to be done on more on a a hand basis with, you know, more manual labor. Uh, we've never rented the equipment for longer than thirty days. Uh, it's certainly earlier in the season, but this was our only opportunity to rent this piece of equipment. As you'll probably recall, this was a part of the original capital plan to purchase one of these mowers uh for the town so we can have it throughout the course of the summer. There's really only uh two or three in the area that we have access to from our from rental situation, and that narrow window um is the primary driver why we wanted to acquire one on our own. But uh, we think that the thirty-day window certainly provides us the opportunity to get everything knocked down um and pushed back a- as we need to, but we will still go out and address uh complaints in low-visibility areas by hand after that point. Certainly a long part of the growing season thereafter, but um, you know, this is the the best opportunity that we have. Uh, we, yep.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Mizikar, don't we have some equipment that can do some of that work?
We do have, yeah. Our our sidewalk machinery can be converted over um into handle that type of environment um or that type of work.
Okay, thank you. Um, you have uh more, Mr. Mizikar?
Yep, so I'll, I will move um into my special COVID update, and I'll just bring up a the slideshow. Um, so my standard update, um, as we look at the total number of positive cases from the beginning, it's This is great, two meetings. I pulled up the wrong presentation. Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask for your assistance and having Ms. Snell and Ms. Rantham Rathnam, excuse me, pick up for their parts of the updates with regards to the parks and the library. I will switch my presentation out as they do so. I apologize for the for the error.
Okay, we can do that. Ms. Rantham, would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mizikar, for inviting me to share an update from the library. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen for having me at this meeting. State library agencies, such as the Massachusetts Library System and the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, have facilitated discussions with all of the Massachusetts libraries and taken our input and offered guidelines to libraries. These guidelines are in tandem with Governor Baker's phased reopening plans for various organizations. While I miss our library visitors, I'm committed to meeting the state and town of Shrewsbury guidelines while planning a phased reopening of the library. The priority of the Board of Library Trustees and myself is to ensure the safety and well-being of staff and patrons. Since March fifteenth, when the library was closed to the public, library staff have been working remotely on promoting our digital resources and offering virtual programs. They have been extremely flexible and adaptable, demonstrating creativity while planning virtual storytimes for children, book discussions, yoga, and mindfulness classes on Zoom, et cetera. They have also been compiling and highlighting digital resources that residents can access remotely. I would like to highlight two services that we've offered. Our technology specialist took the three-D printers home and has printed visors for shields for an organization called MassFaceShields.com in Natick. And they have donated they have donated the shields to healthcare workers in Massachusetts. The other is a virtual memory cafe that gathered on Zoom last Friday. It was a joy to see four families of caregivers and their loved ones enjoy a musical performance that we coordinated. Lots of groups meet on Zoom for education and recreation, but this was like an icing on a cake and made me very happy. Now let me tell you about the services we'll be rolling out in the coming days and weeks. As far as the library is concerned, we are still on phase one. Part A of phase one started on June first, when staff started going back to the library in two teams on alternate beats. For part B of phase one, we are planning to resume partial services for the public. On Friday, June twelfth, library patrons can return checked-out items that belong to the Shrewsbury Public Library from ten AM to three PM. Materials may be returned in the book drawer. Materials being returned need to be quarantined and will not be. The other service is curb side pickup. Through this through this service, residents may request Shrewsbury library materials ahead of time to borrow and pick up outside the library. Starting on Monday, June eighth, patrons can start placing holds on books, audiobooks, or DVDs through the CWMAR system. Up to ten holds can be placed on one library card. Items available in the Shrewsbury Public Library can be put on hold. When patrons receive an email confirming that their hold is ready to pick up, they can schedule a time for pickup. Their appointments can be made by clicking on the link, schedule appointments for curb-side pickup on the library website. Patrons will have to enter their names, library card numbers, and a description of their cars for staff to be able to identify them. This will be a no-contact transaction, and bags will be ready for pickup on tables outside the library. Curb-side pickup will be available on Tuesday, June sixteenth, Wednesday, June seventeenth, and Thursday, June eighteenth, from ten AM to three PM. We plan to continue with this schedule in the following weeks. We might have to tweak something after we see how it goes the first week, so please stay tuned for any changes or updates. Any questions?
Any questions from members of the board?
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Priya, first, I just want to thank you and your team for all that you've done to try to keep the community connected to the library and its services and engaged. I know that I've always been hesitant to use many of the online services because I've always just found it easier to come into the library than to take the time to learn how to use what's online. But I have had no choice in these past few months, and I I have to say that the emails that have come out, the oversized postcard that I received in the mail, all of those little tidbits are very helpful in bringing people along who might have been reluctant to use the services in the past. And I very much appreciate the effort that it took to to get that going and out into the community. The question that I have is about picking putting holds and and being able to receive materials. It seems as if we are only able to receive materials that are in our library, so that would mean that there's no interlibrary loan right now. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. That will be a service that will start down the line. We, as I said, we're in constant communication with the Massachusetts Library System, and they are in charge of the interlibrary loan. I think there are a lot of details to be figured out about how they would manage this. You know, it's for all the libraries in Massachusetts. And each library in each municipality has a different schedule about even for opening and resumption of services. So it's going to take some time before the interlibrary loan service can start.
It just sort of sort of set off an alarm bell in my mind. I just recall how we are a library that very much depends on interlibrary loan to supplement what we're able to provide in our own collection. And I think it's going to be very interesting and possibly frustrating for some of the patrons when they realize that the wait time for some of the materials they might want to be taking out of the library. But most will probably just be happy to be able to bring back all the materials they have. I know I am. And be able to get something new to read or listen to or watch. Thank you, and thank you to your staff.
Thank you, Beth.
Anyone else? I I just I just want to congratulate you on on your team's ingenuity. I think you've done an incredible job, really, like like everybody else with no forewarning that this was going to happen. And I do think your outreach has been particularly successful. We actually kept the postcard right on the counter and look at it. And we started to use some of the services, looking at newspapers and stuff online that I hadn't done before. So congratulations. And man, if if you, anybody had a tougher time to start, Priya, you did, and you're still smiling through it. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Very much.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kay.
Jim. Mr. Chairman, this may be a question as much for the chief librarian as it is for Mr. Mizikar. But once we begin to open the building for some level of public participation, what level of cleaning will occur? Is it daily? Is it every other day? How does one ensure the transition is a successful one with the current resources? Are we bringing back the evening service? I'm just wondering if we could have a thirty-second outline.
Sure, Mr. Mizikar.
I think it's a perfect time to transition to Ms. Snell since that falls squarely within her purview, and thanks for bailing me out of my tech fail, Priya.
Ms. Snell?
Sure. So we will be cleaning the library daily when it's back open to the public. And we will be bringing back the contract cleaners at that time as well. We also have been cleaning all of the buildings that are being used now daily. You know, most of them have been like the office areas and things. So we are, you know, working on a plan with with Priya on how to, you know, keep that maintained for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, do you want Ms. Snell to go through next, or do you want to do your presentation first?
I think it's fine. If she would like to proceed, that'd be that'd be great, and then I'll pick it up after that.
Okay, Ms. Snell?
Sure. So I also wanted to talk tonight about the parks. We are now entering phase two for parks facilities. So I wanted to give an update. In an effort to stop the spread of COVID-nineteen, we're asking people to follow these guidelines and reminders when using the public facilities at the parks. Please wash your hands before and after your visit or bring hand sanitizer. Please stay home if you're sick or not feeling well. And you do need to wear a face covering when you cannot maintain the six-foot social distancing from others. So what's actually opening in phase two? Right now, we have opened up the basketball courts at the parks and at the the elementary schools. Playgrounds at parks and schools will be open by tomorrow morning. The restrooms at Dean Park will also be open tomorrow morning, and we will be cleaning those daily in the morning. We also will begin to issue permits to the local Shrewsbury sports organizations. These organizations have to follow the new state guidelines for youth sports practices. Practices have to be in groups of ten, and the start dates will vary depending on the league. Probably the earliest you'll see teams will be next week. The elementary and middle school grounds are also open, except for any during any school hours or programs. Like if they're doing a, you know, drop-off program is back, we ask that people not use the facilities at that time. So what's also already open, obviously, all the town parks and trails are still open. The Donahue Rowing Center has already opened for single boats only at this time. The state boat ramps are open, and guidelines were issued by the State Fishing and Boating Access from the state. The tennis courts had opened at Dean Park, Coolidge, and Oak Middle School. We asked that no tennis lessons, tournaments, or groups be in the tennis courts. And I'd also like to point out that the tennis courts at Coolidge School are now lined for pickleball. So if that's something you've been wanting to play, you can do that at Coolidge. We do have tennis permits available. That's an online program where you can reserve a block of time at one of those tennis courts. What is still closed? The Shrewsbury High Athletic Complex is still closed till further notice. Group picnics are closed and special events and groups of ten or more people are still prohibited. We also have on our on our website, the face mask and covering guidance, order number thirty-one. So if people wanted to look at that and be familiar with that before you venture out. And then also the order on gatherings of ten or more, which is order number thirty-eight issued by the state, that's also on our website. And again, with the sports groups, we are working with our existing sports groups. So if you're interested in a sport, it's mostly going to be baseball and softball that'll probably be played this summer and then possibly football later on in the season. I think soccer is going to wait until the fall. So if there's any questions on that, I just want to say that we just started getting our our seasonal staff back in place. We are not at full staff right now, so we just appreciate everybody's cooperation as we're trying to get things back in back in order in the parks. They have been very busy the last couple of weeks, and we expect they'll be even more busy now that things are starting to open up. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else, Ms. Snell?
No, that's it.
Okay, great. Seems to be a lot of activity at Dean Park. So it's a lot of pent-up demand, so thank you. Mr. Mizikar. Are you all set?
Ready to try again.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Snell, Ms. Rathnam. We'll see you soon, we hope.
Okay, hopefully I am sharing my screen. Everyone can see that. As of today, June ninth, twenty twenty, there are three hundred and ten positive cases that have been identified in the town, which is an increase of forty from the last Board of Selectmen meeting. That is a total of eighty-one days since the notification of our first case, with an average of three point eight-two cases per day, which is a reduction of one-tenth from the last Board of Selectmen's meeting. As the board knows, and we've tried to message to the public, there was a backlog of cases that represent thirty-two of those forty cases. So we actually have the dates, which we can integrate those positive cases back into the timeline. So there was no spike and no significant increase in any single day. And we apologize for that challenge that we had from the state reporting system. But as we were thrown into that and coordinating with the state, there was an error in the way we were pulling the cases down. We have great news from the period of the most recent seven-day period or the previous seven-day period of May twenty-seventh to June second, where no positive cases were reported. From June third to June ninth, the forty positive cases were reported, with thirty-two being from the backlog. Without the backlog, that's an average of one point one four two cases per day, which again remains below our moving average since the beginning. Still very low within the population context in general. There has been one additional COVID-nineteen death identified, which was a clustered death, an increase of one from the last Board of Selectmen meeting, a total of eighty-four deaths, COVID identified another, which is an increase of nine. Those numbers continue to fall, thankfully. Ten point six-four percent of the total positive cases were deceased, at least identified on the death certificate, and still less than one-tenth of one percent in the context of the overall population of the town. This was just to touch on the the town buildings outside of the library. We are currently closed to the public until June fifteenth. We will open to the public for voting purposes only within the appropriate town buildings for the election on June sixteenth, which is one week from today. We'll be closed to the public again after the elections until at least the following Monday. We will need time to go back through all the various buildings where voting occurs, the polling places, and be able to clean them after the election. So we'll need that balance of that week in order to be able to do so. Once we do open to the public at a date that we will announce and publicize in advance, it's likely that the initial phase, like many other communities and other organizations, will be open by appointment only and will provide detailed guides on what that will require in the future. The library and parks and recreation facilities and programs report were provided earlier. With regards to the CARES Act funding application, the town received a per capita award from the federal stimulus of ninety dollars, just over ninety dollars per capita, providing us with just over three point three million dollars in total funding. For the first application period, which runs from March first to June thirtieth, we've submitted a request for nine hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. That request is roughly balanced both between expenses that have actually occurred and those that we project to occur between June first and June thirtieth, and is also roughly split between town operations and school operations with regards to the total dollar value. This evening, Mr. Chairman, I would like to notify the board that I'm still not comfortable with moving forward towards an annual town meeting. There's still no notification with regards to state aid from the Commonwealth. Additionally, there, you know, in order to be able to proceed with the appropriate hearings and activities of other boards and committees like the Planning Board and the Finance Committee, I want to be very clear that tonight I do not see an opportunity to hold meeting, hold the annual town meeting on June twenty-ninth. And I look forward to having a formal action item on your next agenda to recommend and support. to recommend and support the moderator in postponing the annual town meeting to a date in the future. The next two weeks will hopefully provide us with additional information that we can have greater certainty when we actually may be able to meet. As you know, Mr. Chairman, as you participated, there was a meeting earlier this week, yesterday, with the moderator and Public Buildings Director, Mark Sarah from SMC, and Sandy Wright, Town Clerk, to begin the logistical preparations for the annual town meeting and what it would take to bring such a meeting to fruition in the near future. So that concludes my special COVID-19 report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one quick question for Kevin.
Sure.
Kevin, just a quick question on the CARES Act reimbursement. Is there any deductible or is it dollar-for-dollar?
That portion, the 918,844, is our dollar-for-dollar final number. There are, we are requesting a portion of funding that we believe will be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. So this represents 25% of those costs. So the standard FEMA reimbursement, which is still in effect, is that the town is responsible for 25% of eligible costs, and FEMA would reimburse us for 75. So CARES Act funding will be used for our 25% match for those annual costs.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Mizikah?
I have a question. So on the, on the portion of it that would be directed to the schools, is that for the purchase of PPE for the upcoming school year?
It does include the purchase of PPE for the upcoming school year. That is consistent with the guidelines that were released by DESI earlier this week. Essentially, is a ratio to a number of students, I believe it's per hundred students, you know, guidelines that they provided for what it would estimate it to supply students on a limited basis and staff for a three-month period. And it also includes various other costs, like software and hardware to help enable remote, excuse me, remote education.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mizikah, if you don't have anything else, you want to move on to the budget?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I'll share my screen again in order to do that. Mr. Chairman, if we discuss, the state has provided the town, all municipalities with the opportunity. If we do not, if we're not able to hold town meeting, we can seek continuing appropriation funding on a month-by-month basis in order to continue to operate in the absence of town meeting. We continue to feel that it's in the best interest of the town, both from a public health perspective and a financial perspective with regards to the information that we have to continue to delay town meeting. And thus, we're requesting this evening that the Board of Selectmen take actions to submit this request to the state for July 2020. As I'd mentioned at previous meetings, the revenue model that we are using as the background for this 1/12 budget request indicates that we will have roughly 2.53% less funding for the fiscal year when it's annualized. That's a revenue reduction of about 3.654 million. And those reductions mainly fall within the new growth, which is the tax levy, a portion of the tax levy, state aid, local receipts, and free cash. Although we will be utilizing additional reserves, i.e. free cash, that was intended for the stabilization account within the operating budget to help reduce some of these costs in the amount of, excuse me, to help offset some of the revenue reductions in the amount of $835,000. So with that underpinning of a revenue model in mind, I have prepared and am ready to answer questions for the board and recommend that you forward to the Department of Revenue a July 2020 expenditure request of $18,184,470. This includes general fund and all enterprise funds for their operations, and further breaks down with a total general fund request of $16,931,678. Within the general fund, that would fund the town in operating support portions of the budget at a level of $5,342,818. It provided a school department with $5.5 million worth of funding, and it would fund our debt service obligations for the month of July at $6,088,600. Outside of the general fund, we're required to request funding within our enterprise accounts, which, as you know, are standalone accounts that operate off of the rates and revenues that are restricted for their operations alone. So within our five established enterprise funds, we're requesting $356,211 for solid waste, $526,235 for sewer, $312,431 for water, $121,395 for stormwater, and $35,520 for PEG access. So in total, if you put all these together, it is the total dollar value of $18,184,470, which I feel we need to operate. These numbers were developed in concert with each department head. The town has an obligation through statute to request at least 1/12 of the FY '20 budget, and we have done that. This 1/12 is roughly 8.3%, and this represents roughly 13% of the FY '20 budget in total, so we meet that requirement. And I do have additional slides that detail the individual department expenditures and shows the relationship for those monthly expenditures to the overall budget picture that we presented to the Finance Committee back in February, which obviously is, is no longer valid. But I think it's a good point of reference. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to work with you on those. And I'll stop sharing my screen, but can put it back up if needed.
Okay, thank you. Questions from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
Mr. Chairman, as is often the case with budgets and departments on the municipal level, there are some that can go with a relatively short timeframe, and there are others that, by virtue of what they do, such as the school department, they need a longer timeframe. Kevin, how do you see the 1/12, or the approach, which I'm in full agreement with, allowing for some level of sufficient planning for those departments that, that do in fact have a longer outlook than, than some other departments?
Thanks for the question. You are right. So I think most departments on the municipal side are able to really operate on a month-by-month basis, including our enterprise funds. But our partners on the education side certainly need much more stability in a long-term perspective as we near the beginning of the school year. From conversations with Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer, July and August, one-month funding, we can certainly operate, and the schools have a comfort level, as you know, given the lack of significant activity. There certainly is, but the lack of normal-level school year activity during those two months, they're certainly able to manage it. But we will need to be solidifying things by late July, and we can put the August one-month budget in place. But before the end of August, we will need to turn to a full-budget picture to provide them with continuity and stability moving in, even if that means we do not have what we would desire from the state from a revenue perspective. Hopefully, we get some indication, but I would sum that up by saying very bluntly that we will need to hold town meeting before the end of August, and preferably in the middle of August to make sure that we're able to properly function for the beginning of the school year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions at this point? Okay, Mr. Mizikah, do you want to show us the other slides?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So we're not going line by line, but just providing the detail to the board that represents the $18.1 million request, where those costs lie. So in the far-left column is the department identifier, and the next column to the, to the right is the budget that I'm recommending this evening that the board adopt and submit to the Department of Revenue for July funding authorization. So this represents the standard operations for all these departments, including the first two enterprise funds. And on the next slide, we bring the balance of the enterprise funds into play. You'll see the $5.5 million for the school and the $6 million in debt. And two columns to the right, as I previously mentioned, from the town manager recommendation, you'll see the original budget that we brought forth with fiscal projection one, which was a $139 million spend plan. And this is $18 million of that. Certainly more than 1/12, but the largest driver behind that number of course is our debt service, which nearly half of our debt service comes due within the month of July.
Okay, you.
That's it. Yep, thank you.
Okay, so this isn't, it's not a strict, by department, it's not a strictly 1/12. I mean, some of the departments needed more money this, this month than others.
That, that is correct. And, you know, so the formula that we use from a broad here of the two numbers, either what the departments actually will need to spend, you know, by, you know, doing the homework and looking back on previous Julies and understanding what their obligations are moving forward, or 1/12 in the fiscal year 2020 budget, which was ever greater. Because remember, we have the obligation through the legislation to at least request 1/12 of the FY '20 budget for the prior year. But we have the opportunity to request actual expenditures, you know, and one of those areas that that enables is our continued prompt payment of our debt principal and interest schedule.
Can I ask a question about the general insurance?
Sure.
But that obviously looks like it can't be apportioned out over 12 months. I mean, is that standard, that you have to pay the whole thing upfront?
Yep. We, we always pay our full insurance premium upfront. Our, our full insurance premium does not, is not $900,000. It's, you know, in the $870,000 range. And then we also have deductible, you know, funding for deductibles that we would be responsible if there isn't an incident. So there's no harm for us to request it. The vast majority of this will be paid out in our premium. We actually get a, you know, a quote, you know, prompt pay discount for paying our policy upfront. You know, it's very similar to your private insurance. You know, oftentimes, companies will have, you know, one premium value if you pay, you know, one time a year, and, you know, kind of goes up if, you know, the smaller bites that you pay from quarterly to monthly. So really, the same is true for the town's insurance policy. That's why we're requesting the total funding and to make sure we have funds on hand for any deductibles that we may be required to cover.
One other question. I thought I saw it in here this afternoon. Maybe it was in a note. What are you budgeting for unemployment? You've got to be anticipating that we're going to have some claims in July.
I, I am budgeting $50,000. It's on the screen there. It's kind of buried about 2/3 of the way down. So I'm budgeting $50,000.
Oh, yeah, okay.
$50,000. If we spent that in July, would, would actually be, you know, what we would have spent the entire fiscal year '20. I have in the, the full budget document that we're working on, $200,000 for unemployment claims in fiscal year '21, which I think should be sufficient based upon the claims that we've received to date. Ultimately, the town will get reimbursed for 50% of the claims that we pay out. So hopefully, that becomes a rolling process, and we're able to realize that revenue back in and leverage it in the future. So we are budgeting the $50,000 for a single month, which is a conservative drawdown on that planned spending area.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions on this? Okay, Mr. Mizikah, do you have more to present?
I do not. We would just need for the board to consider taking action to submit this July 2020 budget request.
So what is the actual motion to authorization to submit on the budget for July 2020?
Yeah, I, I think we, we have shared a rather lengthy motion within the board's packet this evening. I believe Ms. Cassavet, they have it.
I'm actually just looking for it.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's fine.
If you don't have, if you don't have it, Beth, I do.
Why don't you read it then, Mr. Lebo?
Okay, I, I move the board vote to approve the monthly expenditure plan for July 2020 for the general fund, water service fund, sewer fund, pay-as-you-throw fund, stormwater fund, and PEG access fund in the amount of $18,184,470, and authorize the electronic submission of the plan in accordance with the Division of Local Services Bulletin 2020-6.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? And it requires a roll call vote. Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavet.
Aye.
Mrs. DePaulo, aye. Okay, well said on that, Mr. Mizikah.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, do you want to take us through item 7? Did I lose them? Oh, they are.
Sorry about that. I'm not having the best tech event this evening. That was item 7, Mr. Chairman, and I believe we're ready to proceed with the continued hearing, number eight.
Okay, that was all part. Six and seven were intertwined. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so next order of business is the continued public hearing of 81 Clinton Pub LLC, Billy's Pub on 81 Clinton Street. Again, because of the, the COVID situation, they have asked for another continuance. So I would ask that this be continued to June 23rd.
So moved. Yep.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cassavet.
Aye.
Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mrs. DePaulo, aye. Okay, so we'll continue that. Next order of business is to review the open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins. It was submitted on May 27th regarding the board's May 26th meeting and executive sessions from March 7th to March 10th, 2020. Mr. Mizikah, do you want to take us through that, or do you need approval or sign off on this letter?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, there are, there is some information that I'd like to go over with you and just get the board's acknowledgement of. So if you'll just bear with me real quick, so I can have it up in front of me. So as the board is aware, Patrick Higgins submitted an open meeting law complaint in response to the board's May 26th meeting. And included within that complaint, Mr. Higgins states that the board And fourth and finally, did not list the donor for the agenda item for review and act to accept an offer of gift to the town of Shrewsbury. There was no information on the donor, on who the donor was or what the gifts were. When an open meeting law complaint is filed, the Attorney General requires that the public body that receives the complaint, the chair must disseminate the complaint to the members of the public body, which we have done. The public body must meet to review the complaint within 14 business days, which is 20 to 22 calendar days, which you're doing this evening through this action. And after review, but within 14 business days, the public body must respond to the complaint in writing and must send a complaint, a response, and a description of any action the public body is taken to address the allegations in the complaint. At the same time, the public body must send the Attorney General a copy of the complaint and a copy of the response. The public body may delegate this responsibility to an individual member of the public body, its council or staff member, but only after the public body is met to review the complaint. If a public body requires more time to review the complaint and respond, it may request an extension of time, but we are within that window. You could have contacted Division of Open Government to do so. Once the public body has responded to this complaint, which we will do this evening, if the complainant is not satisfied with the public body's response, they may file a copy, a complaint with the Division by mail or by hand, but only once they have waived the 30 days after filing the complaint with the public body. And that would be sent to the Division of Open Government by the Attorney General's Office at One Ashbrook Place, the 20th floor, Boston Maze, 0102108. And emails may be sent to openmeeting@state.mA.us. When that individual would file a complaint with the Division, they would please include the complaint form and all documentation relevant to the alleged violation. That individual may wish to attach a cover letter explaining why the public body's response does not adequately address their complaint. The Division will not review complaints filed with them more than 30 days after the violation unless they grant an extension to the public body or that the complainant can demonstrate cause for the delay. So in reviewing this, the four items, and the board should acknowledge that we did not list the members that could potentially be appointed to the Police Municipal Campus Committee, Building Committee, and in the future, we will do better in illustrating who may be appointed to the committee, to the extent that it is known in advance of the meeting. The board accepts the fact that the minutes were not adopted for the March 7 and the March 10, 2020, executive sessions within three days, or three meetings or 30 days, whichever is longer. And we will set up a better schedule internally by staff, and I will say on top of that and inform the board so we do not miss that deadline again. With regards to the complaint that we have in the legal executive session on March 10, we reject the idea that there is inability for the board to convene to review confidential attorney-client communication, but this response was not filed in a timely manner within 30 days of the March 10. So this issue is not relevant for the complaint, as it does not fall within those parameters. With regards to the final complaint, that the board did not list for the name of the donor and the amount of the gift, I concede the fact that the... Those items were not on the agenda. However, at the time, the donor was considered remaining anonymous, and I did not want to reveal that through the agenda, as I worked with the chairman to develop the agenda. We did not want to potentially have the town not receive the gift because the generous donor wanted to remain anonymous. And it was further uncertain at the time whether the donor was going to be able to provide the full original amount that was provided in the letter. So because of those two uncertainties, they were not included on the agenda. But now, I certainly more formally understand our obligations under that aspect of the open meeting law, and will further vet that information and provide the board with more information. And if possible, add it to the agenda in the future where we are required to do so. So members of the board, we have prepared a formal letter for you, and we've provided a motion for you within your document for this evening's meeting that would be your formal response to this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this matter.
Okay, questions from members of the board? Okay. I think the answers are fine. Apparently, we had some minor lapses there, and you acknowledged them for us in the letter. So if there's no other comments on this, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to sign the letter as prepared by the manager's office.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Cassavet?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Follow, aye. Okay, Mr. Mizikah. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Patrick Higgins.
Mr. Higgins?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the response. I'm currently out of town on a business trip, so if the town manager could send a response by email and not regular mail, that would be perfect, and I will not be seeking further review. I'm accepting your remedial action, so once I have that email from your town manager, that will be the end of this open meeting law complaint.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice. Okay. We're onto item 10. Review an act, sign a letter to support of support for the 2020 municipal vulnerability grant application and to authorize the chairman to sign the grant application. This is to hire a consultant to study the resiliency of a few key sewer pump stations and to have recommendations developed for the capital improvements to them. So, Mr. Mizikah, is there anything beyond that that seems pretty straightforward?
Yeah, it's a straightforward application. This is one of the previous projects that we submitted in our submission last year that include four different aspects, but we wanted to focus on this one and gain some momentum for this valuable program for the town.
Okay, thank you. Questions from members of the board? If there's none, could I have a motion to authorize the chair to sign the grant application?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Cassavet?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mrs. Samia?
Aye.
Mrs. DePaulo?
Aye.
Okay. Our next order of business is to review an act on the town manager evaluation form. Before we get into any discussion, Mrs. Anderson and I, over several months in between all the other stuff that she had to do with hirings and such, had worked to put this draft together. I would... We wanted to present it for review and consideration, not necessarily to act to accept it this evening. I will say, please don't focus on the number of trees we had to cut down to print this out. We decided we would focus on the verbiage of the document, and when the board was in agreement on what the document should or should not say, we would work it down to condense it into a smaller package. So having said that, does anybody have any comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do.
Mr. Samia?
The way... Thanks for your work on this. One thing I'd like to see is this, when I read through the various categories here, I view those as core competencies. What I would like to see is really split into two, the core competencies that are listed here, and then a second part with specific goals for that fiscal year. I think they should be given just as much weight as the core competencies. Those should be set at the beginning of a year that we're reviewing and evaluated based on goals that were expected to be achieved at the end of the year. That's what I would like to see.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with you, actually, that it should have been in there, and we just didn't focus on it because of the... We didn't really quite get to the level of goals that we had, at least setting up the structure for it this year, and it just fell off the radar. So if the other members of the board agree, I think it's an appropriate section to add. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau?
I mean, I simply... I think I was in a second before you selected Kane. I'd simply like to see what it is that you and Selectman Samia are describing. I'm not totally following it, so perhaps when... It sounds like there's going to be some redrafting. I'd be happy to, I mean, obviously, review that. I'm not exactly following the proposed changes.
But I think we had worked with Mr. Mizikah, started on setting some goals, his goals, and goals that the board agreed with the manager. That would be something to be focused on and accomplished during the upcoming year. And we had agreed that at one point further back, that that would be part of how the manager would be evaluated. And in the process of all this other stuff going on, we kind of... We never finalized those goals this year, so it kind of fell by the wayside. So if... But sure, we could put something together. Unless Mr. Mizikah wants to add something, but I think that... Mr. Mizikah, you want any input on that?
No, I fully support, you know, having, setting, you know, setting the goals and being held to them and working with the board to accomplish them and being responsible and, you know, under that performance provision within my contract and through, you know, that aspect of the tool. Support that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kane, did you have a comment?
You covered it. I know during the day, I annually sit with my chairman and then a couple of the board members, and they go through this, so I get to have that input as to what I'm going to be graded against. You touched on the fact that you have done so with the manager, or that's what I thought I heard. Am I correct in that?
I hadn't sat down with him, but if you remember back, well, way at the beginning of the fiscal year, we had started talking about setting some goals and we had a tentative draft, and things just kind of happened, and we never solidified them and formalized them for this year. So it's just... That's why it fell off the radar.
No, I understand, and God knows, we've had other things to deal with, as has the manager. My only point is, at some point, either a delegation of the board or yourself as the current chairman, I think, should sit with him and walk through so that it makes sense to him. He will be graded on it. I'm sure his input would only help. He's not looking for a layup employment relationship. So I would simply ask that if you're still chairman, as this is ripe and carries forward, I'd appreciate it if you would make sure he gets a look at it with you in his office to walk through and see how practical it is, because, you know, you're going to have five well-meaning individuals who can, on occasion, simply miss the mark. So my only point is, I think it would be valuable to have Kevin's input on a near-final draft.
Okay. Mr. Mizikah, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did with Mrs. Anderson, or perhaps you gave it to her to get in... We did get input on the draft that's before us currently, right?
That's correct. I provided input on that document, yes. Thank you.
Well, as usual, Chairman, you're well ahead of me and have accomplished the objective. Thank you.
Well, I think this is... In any event, I certainly don't think this... I'd be surprised if this was actually the final draft. I think there's some places that we could chop it up, the language on it. I've actually been working on that a little bit and working on trying to condense it up so it's not quite as large a document, and I'll be working with Mrs. Anderson about that. And then, any comments that members of the board have, we'd incorporate into this and bring it back to the board and Mr. Mizikah, if that's okay with the board.
Final plan.
Okay. Is there anything in particular that anybody would like to see addressed, or question on this beyond the goal issue, which... No?
I have a question. So for each one of these rubrics, like you've got the 0 to 4 scale, underneath you have some descriptors.
Yep.
So you're reading... The idea is to look at these descriptors and then give a score between 0 and 4 for each particular area. I think it would be helpful when we develop the goals page if we correlate them to each of these different factor areas that you have listed here as a way to guide us when we're evaluating the performance of the manager. If that makes any sense.
Yeah.
As far as the formatting, I just think it's, when you have something that has to have a table under every criteria, it's just going to be large, but we would be hopefully doing this electronically, so wouldn't be killing a bunch of trees.
Right. But I've got at least two or three, well, probably five or six pages that are down to two or three already. So, yeah, if... One thing that Christina had said was, after we get this all the way we want it, she would set it up so that the input can be done electronically. But we'd certainly work into the document what your suggestions were, though. I think it's a good idea.
This is a really drastic change from the tool we've used in the past, and I know that that has probably taken you and Miss Anderson quite a bit of time to come up with something that's so different, but I think so much more meaningful in providing an evaluation of someone's work. So I do want to thank you for your time and attention to this project.
Like, you know, that other form, Mr. Connie was here. It was either his last year or his next-to-last year, and we did it, we brought that in, copied it off, pretty much off another community's, their rating sheet, and talked for the last 20-something years about, we need to fix it. And every year, we talk about it, and it just slipped away. So now that we have an HR person, it certainly helped a lot to get this going. So anyways, we'll keep working on it and bring it back to the board as necessary for taking it or final approval. Okay. Next order of business is to review and act on the process for approval of outdoor dining premises for restaurants pursuant to the COVID-19 Order 35. Under the order, restaurants, if they have adequate space, can expand to outside dining with certain restrictions, et cetera. There are a bunch of regulations and such that have to be met, but it isn't a public hearing process that the restaurant owners would have to go through. It just comes before the board for, hopefully for approval, so that they don't have that long lag in getting their approval so they can get it. Next order of business is to review and act on the process for approval of outdoor dining premises for restaurants pursuant to the COVID-19 Order 35. Under the, under the, under the order, restaurants, if they have adequate space, can, can can expand outside dining with certain restrictions, et cetera. There are a bunch of regulations and such that have to be met, but it isn't a public hearing process that, that, that the restaurant owners would have to go through. It just comes before the board for, hopefully for approval so that they don't have that, that long lag in getting their approval so they can get open. So Ms. Martinez, I think was the primary person who worked on this. And as you saw in the package, there's all the regulations and the points of contact for, for the various things that have to be done, particularly the application for a tent and things such as that. So I think the request tonight is to look at this and basically sign off or agree that these forms are appropriate so that they can get sent out in final form tomorrow to the restaurants. And so they can get going on the process. So I don't know if anybody had any comments on these.
Mr. Chairman, I just have two small comments.
Sure.
Just on this, just to, on page two of the guidelines, just, just a suggestion. Under D where layout of tables and chairs, just consider adding a third criteria that there's a maximum party size of six under the Phase Two regulations.
Yeah, that somewhere in that, they might have missed it in the guidelines. It's there somewhere. We'll make sure.
And, and just one other question is that on the rights of the town of Shrewsbury to revoke, and maybe we don't need to say it, but one other, there are four listed, a fifth one would be as if the state pull back on Phase Two as well. I don't know if we need to say that or not, but to make it express that if there's, there's an uptick in cases and the state pulls back and we go before Phase Two, should we add that as well? Those are my comments.
I, I think that's on another page, but we can make sure it's in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? One thing I, I, I did see Mr. Mizikar on the barriers that were just examples of what would be considered appropriate. They certainly all are, but I, I think some of the board members will remember in the beginning, we had this outside dining. Some of them were built like fortresses. And we gradually had realized that it was a little bit overboard. And when two ovens, which is not open now, down at the Light City came in, they basically asked and we approved to have bolids with like a chain in between them instead of solid fencing. We, we did approve that and it's, it's probably a less expensive alternative for a restaurant. So I, I'd just like to make sure that we don't, when they're being reviewed, that it's not so rigid that they can't have something like that as opposed to, you know, continuous metal fencing or whatever.
Yep. I certainly hear that and we will work to that end. We've had really good conversations with staff in developing this and everyone at the table, including all inspectors, know that the goal of this process is to reopen economic activity and not regulate a long-term environment or situation, and that's the premise that we're working from.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything?
Yes, I have a question.
Ms. Casavant?
Under this plan and the people that are involved in the oversight and the inspection, who will be charged with making sure that the premises would be handicap accessible? Meet ADA requirements for accessibility?
That will be done through the building inspector's review. If there is a building inspector contingent, if not, it will be handled through the manager's office directly as we will be coordinating all applications. So there's some instances where if there's not a tent, then, you know, not all parties would have to be involved. So we will take on that responsibility ultimately. But in a formal setting where the building inspector is involved, it will be, it will fall to them as, as is our standard practice.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then. I don't think we need a vote, but do we, Mr. Mizikar, we, we can just, these seem like, nobody has any real issues with these. So they can start going out tomorrow.
We are seeking that the board formally adopt this process that we've laid out in this application with a simple motion that says that, you know, you're adopting this process and application in accordance with COVID-19 Order 35. And then you are correct, we will reiterate and do outreach to the community. We're holding a public information session later this week on Thursday. And as you had noted earlier in the meeting, we've scheduled a series of meetings for the board to respond to the actual application. Residents will be able to go, or interested parties will be able to go to www.shrewsburyma.gov/OutdoorDining to be able to access the application. So we do need your approval of this process and the application itself.
Okay, so can we have a motion to that effect then?
Yes, motion to approve.
Okay. Second? Somebody going to make a second?
Second. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Selectman Samia.
Okay, Ms. Casavant?
Hi.
Mr. Lebov?
Hi.
Mr. Kane?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
Hi.
And Mr. DePaulo, hi. Okay. I believe the next order of business is to review and act on the reappointment of James Brown, 92 High Street, Jeffrey Holland, 100 Maple Ave, Nick Repetka, 100 Maple Ave, Joseph Thomas, 86 Grove Street, Patricia Sheen, 100 Maple Ave, Kristen Lass, 100 Maple Ave, Andrew Truman, 100 Maple Ave, to the Complete Streets Committee for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, just one question?
Yes.
Does this committee review and prepare? I don't recall this committee, to be perfectly honest with you. And as I've said before, although some think Complete Streets is the panacea, I have great concerns for what it does to a rural side street or a rural main road, such as a lake street. So I apologize if I missed this somewhere along the way, but could the managers refresh me on what their exact charge is?
Mr. Mizikar? This committee is charged with, well, they had a long charge to start with and we finally progressed to I think what is considered Phase Three, which is the submission of project applications to the board for consideration for funding application. So that's really the balance of their charge at this point. They've identified prioritized projects and submitted our original application to the state, et cetera. And now it is up to them to make recommendations to the board to seek additional funding and to prioritize projects for street, complete street eligibility.
Okay, so they're doing work and then we'll ultimately come back to this board before taking any formal steps relative to design. Am I correct in understanding your comments?
That is correct. You'll recall, Mr. McGoldrick came back to the board, probably maybe six months ago, eight months ago for an update with the prioritized projects. And yes, it will ultimately come back to the board before any actions taken.
I don't know where this is on the state's funding priority, given the current challenge, but I would encourage you, Kevin, to perhaps get a written update as to where they are in the event there was ever a great divergence of opinion between those spending their time during the day and then those on the board. So the sooner we get a sense of where they're going, I think it's, it's better for everyone involved.
Mr. Mizikar, Mr. Kane, we, we do have a list that basically, in a sense, signed off on in terms of, yeah, we agreed that there would be projects that we might want to apply for. So I, I think I still have a copy in my computer and I can, if not, I can get a copy and send it out to the board. So we can all take a look at it. Because I remember having the same concerns that you had, that some of these things were they're going to, they're going to look nice on paper but not be practical and maybe actually have a negative impact on projects. So I'm happy to get that to the board one way or another tomorrow so that you have the list to, to review.
I'd appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I recall the same list on ledger paper. But I would just hate to have good people working, you know, in good faith and then come back with some much more refined or finalized proposal and not have the support of the board. So I just think updating us more often than we're asking for your approval of something earlier on in the process is just in the interest of everyone involved. That's all.
Okay. Okay. So we voted on that, right?
No, I made a motion and then Mr. Kane said some stuff.
I had tech difficulty. Seconds.
Okay. Ms. Casavant?
Aye.
Lebov?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Apollo, aye. Okay. Next order of business is to review and act on the reappointment of John Camo, 176 North Street, and Christine Gustafson, 216 Prospect Street, to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30th. Tonight, I'd ask the board only to vote on Ms. Gustafson because Mr. Camo just wants to make sure, he wants to make another three-year commitment. And we have time to do this on June 23rd. So if that's okay with the board, I'd ask for a motion to reappoint Christine Gustafson to a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Motion to appoint Christine Gustafson for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Ms. Casavant?
Aye.
And Mr. Lebov?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Item 15 is to review and act on the reappointment of Robert Pine, 20 Montgomery Ave, Worcester to the Insurance Advisory Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2021. Just so people who might be listening understand, Mr. Pine was an employee of the Light Department. He's in the retirement system and that is why he could be on our Insurance Advisory Committee, but still within the with there, so just so there's no confusion. So if I could have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in second. Ms. Casavant?
Aye.
Mr. Lebov?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Apollo, aye. Item 16 is to review and act on the reappointment of Stephen Madas, 100 Front Street, Worcester, as Town Council for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in second. Any further discussion? If any, none. Ms. Casavant?
Aye.
Bo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Apollo, aye. Okay, thank you. All right. Down to correspondence. Item 17 is an email dated May 22nd from Melinda Springer, 47 Maple Drive, regarding Selectman's meeting. She had written an email concerned that she hadn't been noticed on what she thought was a public hearing regarding her dogs. And we explained to her that that last meeting was just with the animal control officer, just to get an update and information. And she was okay with that. Item 18 is an email dated May 24th from Stephanie. So I got 22 Appaloosa Drive regarding a street sign and a little library. She, she requested children's signs on that road and if she could be allowed to put a little library up. I had some discussions with Mr. Mizikar about that. As long as they were on private property, which all the other ones in town seem to be, shouldn't be an issue. I don't think we want to get into regulating those unless members of the board do. Any thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I've noticed many little libraries cropping up throughout town. I think that it's a wonderful way to bring the community together and share books. I think as long as it's on private property and the homeowner is taking care of the little library, then, you know, there's no need for us to regulate them. I've actually seen some now that have a little shelf attached with some hand sanitizer next to them so that they're respectful of the COVID-19 concerns as people borrow the materials. So I just think we let people do what they would like to do on their property.
Okay, I, I agree. And they are popping up everywhere. I think they kind of, I like the idea, but anyone else? Okay, now the other issue is the, the yellow cautionary sign, whatever they say, children playing or whatever. We did adopt the policy several years ago about, related to blind driveway, handicap signs and the such. But my recollection was that at the beginning of roads that Highway Engineering Police Department felt were appropriate to have signs, that the town did pay for those signs as opposed to those specialty signs that the resident could pay for and install, subject to the approval of the location by the highway superintendent. So maybe somebody else can correct my memory if it's wrong, but I, I thought the cautionary signs for children and some others like that, the town did continue to put up if they were appropriate. Does anybody have any recollection of what we decided to do on those? No?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to quickly review our operational policies. So I'm not sure if this is the right one. Advisory signs, policy six. It will allow for a uniform response to requests by residents for advisory-type signs that have no enforcement value, such as handicap child in blind driveway. Is that, is that what you were thinking about?
Right, but I, I, I thought that it was restricted to something like that and blind driveway, et cetera, not children. I can't remember what the yellow sign says, but it's a yellow diamond sign. It says children playing or caution children or something like that. I thought that we, if we felt they were appropriate, we did put those in as opposed to somebody wanted a drive, a blind driveway in the middle of a neighborhood or somewhere, that we didn't, we didn't put those up. So I could be wrong. Oh, Mr. Holland is, is here, I think.
Yes, I wasn't intended on speaking tonight, but I thought it was a perfect opportunity. So the board has had made, or through the Highway Department, has put up children's signs. There's some on Holden Street over near Worcester Sanding Gravel, which was reaffirmed several years ago, that we, that was installed decades ago, but then was reaffirmed by this board to put them back because some of them had been lost, taken, broken, whatever, but they were put back. I don't recall any other location that, that we've had put up, but I do know that that was one location that the board did have signs put up or through the Highway Department.
Okay, thank you. We, we actually did have them in, in some of the neighborhoods. I don't think we've had a request for a long time, but I, I do remember there was something about if it was in a subdivision, that we would only put them up at the beginning of the main roads going into the subdivision and not in the streets within it because they were already at the gateway to the subdivision. So I know we've done it. We just haven't done it for a long time. I guess the question is, do we, I, I would imagine on Appaloosa, if we did it, you'd put them do we, I, I would imagine on Appaloosa, if we did it, you'd put them on both ends of the street. So I, I guess the question is, the board want to have engineering, highway, police look at it and get a recommendation first and make a decision or? What, what's the pleasure of the board? Ms. LeBeau?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm just thinking, I, I really don't, I don't know what I think right at this moment.
All right, seeing everybody's kind of thinking, why don't, why don't we send this up to Department of Public Works and ask them to take a look at it with the police and see if they think one's necessary and we can, we can take it from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cassavian.
Could we also use this time to get an answer to the question that you originally posed as to what we've done and what the policy has been in the past?
Sure, if they, well, yeah. Have to go back and look at the, the traffic rules and orders, right, Mr. Holland? And, and get the dates and then go back and look at the minutes.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so everybody okay with doing that? Okay, thank you. Okay, item, item 19 is an email dated May 25th from Christopher Mayner, Town Moderator, regarding the town meeting planning guide. Pretty comprehensive list. Covered, covers quite a bit of things that would be involved with the town meeting, so we're thinking for that. Item 20 is an email dated May 26th from Melinda Springer, 47 Memorial Drive, regarding dog box log for May 25th. So Ms. Springer actually has security cameras on her property and I, I guess trying to demonstrate that on the dogs, how frequently the dog barks and for how long, actually went through and, and logged all the times and presented it to us. I'm not sure what the board's gonna do from here. If, it's, it's nice information to have, but I don't know what we do it at this point. Anybody disagree with that? Okay. Item 21 is an email dated May 26th from Kevin Krasnecki, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, regarding a public hearing notice on a tip amendment and the Unified Planning Work Program, which is the, the plan of work, the Central Mass, for the Central Mass NPO for the upcoming fiscal year. That hearing is, it's already happened, it was on June 3rd. So item 22 is an email dated, excuse me, May 26th from Chris Line, 35 Terry Street, regarding an appeal of the approval decision for a Class One license for NITCO. Mr. Mizikar and he exchanged emails. So that question at that point has been answered. Item 23 is a letter dated May 28th from Adams Farm Con Dominion Prestige regarding nuisance dogs at 47 Memorial Drive. They're suggesting that the owners of 47 Memorial Drives are not complying with the board's requirements. My recollection is that they are requiring, they are complying with the board's requirements. It's just that the dogs are still barking, so I'm not, I'm not sure, I, I think we have to craft some kind of a response, but I'm not sure what we, what we would do with this from here. Anybody have any thoughts? No?
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, if I knew how to get the dogs to stop barking, I would have offered up a solution weeks ago. I, I feel for both parties in the situation. I understand how frustrating it is to hear a dog bark, but I also can understand how these dogs are on a, enough working sort of situation on what is considered a piece of farmland and they bark because they're protecting their surroundings. So I really, I'm at a loss as to how to further help the situation.
So am I. I mean, I don't know if anybody else has anything. I think we just continue to monitor it, I don't know what else to do. Somebody had, you know, we're so limited now what we can do in dog hearings. I think we've done pretty much what we could do and if they're doing what we ordered and they put that fence up above a good 100, 150 feet along the property, I, I don't see that they're, they're not complying, I think the dogs just bark. Not, not that that's not aggravating to the people, but I don't, I don't see that they're not complying with the orders. Anybody else have something, somebody else have an opinion? No? Okay, I'll, I'll talk with the manager and draft a letter back to the trustees, if that's okay. Okay. Item 24 is an email dated May 28th from the Mass Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, regarding the 2020 equalized evaluations. There were some informal hearings that were held through yesterday if people wanted to appeal, or it's actually the towns would be appealing that, right, Mr. Mizikar? If they wanted to?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so, so noted. Item 26, 25, we addressed up at the beginning of the meeting and we're talking about the task force. Item 26 is a, is a letter dated June 20th from Jeff Holland to Deborah Bevan Economic Development Administration of Birds in Pennsylvania regarding support for a request for funding from, for Central Mass Regional Planning Commission from the EDA, Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program, specifically here's the funding. So noted. Item 27 is an email dated June 5th from Representative Kane. We got a COVID-19 elections legislation that it was, it was issued related to voting during the, during this state of emergency. And items 28 and 29, I acknowledged earlier in the meeting. And I believe, unless I miss something, that, that is it. Unless somebody else has any items for the board in open session? If not, we ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Okay, Ms. Cassavian.
Hi.
LeBeau.
Hi.
Samia.
Hi.
Kane.
Hi.
Mr. DePaulo, hi. Okay, this evening is adjourned, thank you and have a good evening.